Jay Shiloh.
Here.
Michael Hoppel.
Here.
Michael D'Vito.
Here.
And Brian Evans.
Here.
Alan Kurios.
Here.
Eric Jones. This was the performance of the...
Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, so.
Uh...
Motion carries. Is there a motion to move the consent agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
The consent, all in favor?
Uh...
Right. Motion carries. So, here's a roll call. We can make a roll call. Let's do a roll call. Let's see, so, uh...
Billy? Evans?
Yes.
Kurios?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Hoppel?
Yes.
D'Vito?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to approve the consented, or the I... agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Second.
And seconded. Roll call.
Or yes?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Hoppel?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
D'Vito?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, audience to this, starting on the audience would like to address the board for three minutes. All while knowing that it's one-way communication for the board's interest and purpose of understanding.
This was the meeting that you wanted attendance at, right? I'm reading the upcoming board meeting on Tuesday, June 25th.
One moment, real fast.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. Would you be able to address the board with your name and address?
Sure. Michelle, my address? You know where I live, 'cause I'm your neighbor, but my name is Michelle Melneck. I live in Sycamore. I don't need to give my address. And it says your engagement in this process is essential, correct? Steve said that. Why, though? In this email on Parent Square?
Oh, the message you want out here?
Yeah. On June 11th.
So, just to reframe, all the public part, public participation piece is one-way communication for board policy 2230. So the board isn't able to engage in a two-way dialogue, but we're very interested in hearing what you have to say, so that way we can review it and all...
Four days ago, it was, sorry to interrupt you, Michael. Four days ago, it was close that the meeting was at the middle school. And I just drove by there, and nobody's there. So I came here. And how are, like, people supposed to be involved in this, like, dialogue and understand everything when it was not updated where the meeting is now at in the high school? So, communication seems to be an issue. I'm not sure what happened. If it was a technology thing, I'm definitely intrigued to know what's going on, which is why I'm here. And I left my husband, who worked overnight with my kids, and they're gonna be sleeping by the time I get home, and I drove all the over-creation to find out where the meeting was, so... But I just wanna make sure, this, can I get a response to make sure this is the right meeting? It says, "Your engagement in this process is essential. I encourage you to participate in shaping the future of our district by attending the meeting."
So you are in the correct place.
Okay. But it was listed four days ago that it was going to be at the middle school, correct?
Well, and...
Yes or no?
Yep.
Okay. And it wasn't updated at all, because I literally drove by there, and nobody's there. So I'm like, oh, it's probably here. I think more, you know, people coming to it, and I mean, it's summer, totally get that, but if we're gonna want active participation in the district and find out what's going on, and, you know, with all the things, we need to communicate, which you do pretty well. Like, the day of a meeting, where is the meeting going to be held? I asked somebody when he walked in. It's like, is a board meeting here? It's like, oh, yeah. I'm like, I didn't know that. I drove by. The middle school is empty. And he's like, oh, I know, 'cause I got an email. I'm like, well, I didn't get an email? I didn't get, I mean, I had my notifications on in the summer. Anyway, it's just a little frustrating, if you can tell.
So for, just for the board's understanding, we did change the location. It was updated on the board agenda, but we didn't send a message out.
Nope.
So I'd be glad to follow up with, you know, the explainer process a little more.
'Cause, again, if you want involvement from people in the community, I mean, this is how Parent Square's been awesome. I love it. I love communicating with teachers, everybody. And if this is your main source of communication for people, students, staff, parents, whatever, like, that's where I went. I was like, do I have the right day? Do I have the right time? So, it just kinda stinks. That's all.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
For sure.
Can absolutely take that feedback, whereas they're gonna try to take actions because I appreciate your...
Okay. Cool.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Seeing no other comments, we will move to the next item on... Communication correspondence and informational items. There were some. They were in the board packet. Good stuff. Player requests, also interesting.
Sorry, that's not my... Just like, yeah.
Okay. Committee reports.
Okay, so for this report, I will begin, and then Michael...
We've got kind of a lengthy report.
We'll do.
So does anybody else wanna jump in with their report? Is that okay? We just do it?
Sure. See if anyone else has anything? Yeah. I can talk about SEF. So, um, SEF, 17th. Biggest topic for discussion was Rachel's, Rachel Swaber, intended for resignation effective 14th. So they're looking to fill that vacancy as of this point. So just starting the process of finding a new executive for SEF. That was the biggest topic being brought up. So I think that's really the next step in the game. And then I would just, September, Take Week will be happening. That's the largest, I would say, of the, of the events that SEF puts on. So definitely a fun time. If you haven't got a chance to go, definitely encourage it. And I think that's, yeah, that's my, that's my thought.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, let's dive in.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm really excited about the reports.
No, that's okay. I didn't...
It shows, Alex. It shows. You're looking excited.
So I'll take over section one of the packet that I printed out today. This packet is a summary of the Word file that the superintendent emailed all of you. But this is just sort of for the public to go over the changes that Michael and I are proposing. So just as a little refresher, at our previous full board meeting, Michael and I formed an ad hoc committee to discuss the report changes, as well as some...
Committee changes.
Committee, committee structural changes, yes. And I will go over the report changes now. So everyone turn to advantages of new reports, and that's sort of where the beginning of...
Alex, can you hold on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alright, I'll start.
So the goal of these new reports is to enhance the format for clarity, ensure that the board receives updates monthly. And then our first report change is the financial report. So instead of using Forecast 5, we're proposing switching to some sort of system that will just have numbers, as the graphs can be sort of difficult, and in the past we've had an issue with it. And that, that way theoretically wouldn't have to be uploaded every single time the reports ran, as Nicole indicated, when we had that Forecast 5 discussion. And then we can sort of see, we'd like to see numbers by fund, so we know where the action's happening in a sense, the ed fund, operations, et cetera. And then something we'd like to create new would be sort of an explanation for new board members on what the reports are. That might be helpful for future board members as they arrive. Secondly, the personnel report, the changes here are much less, so all we came up with would be for quantifying the financial impact of new personnel. So if we, if we have a new hire, how much is that gonna cost? If we hire a new teacher, what lame stuff are they, how much is that gonna cost, et cetera? It's really more helpful for new hires, so we know how much additional funding hires are gonna take that we don't have currently. Beyond that, the EIS compensation report, we discussed, including compensation for all employees in that report, or at least, or a separate report that includes compensation for all employees across the district. Currently, we just see it for teachers and administrators. And finally, this is something totally new, and I'm kind of excited if we could do this, creating a five-year plan for building updates. I think that'll tie nicely into what we discussed tonight with the potential sales tax referendum, sort of showing the community what we need, why we need it, and our plans to get there. And that's all for me. I'll turn it over to Michael to go over committee restructuring.
Thanks, Alex. Well said. And I also wanna make me commit those PowerPoint's.
Sure.
So I can't take the bread. Alex put this together and handed to me, said, "Read this." So, no, we collaborated on this. And so the second piece to this, committee restructuring proposal, I think it's important to first have context on the way we currently set things up. So we currently have a list of committees, and these committees are, well, it's about 17 committees approximately, and they are all very valuable, and they all provide nice insights. However, what happens at these committees tends to be informational. And so our hope is to restructure to a committee of, well, a group of subcommittees that essentially conduct board work, and then bring forth to the board recommendations for action and revision. So we would still be retaining liaison positions, so we'd be still represented at these groups at an at-world basis. And that's, I think, in a lot of ways, the way we're currently acting now. But these new formed standing committees would take the form of learning and teaching, human resources, business services, and policy. These four standing committees would ultimately serve the board at an ongoing basis, and different from the way our current committee structures work, which are composed of two board members. So they're traditionally held at the will of the board members. They aren't publicly posted, though that information is shared at board meetings when we do the committee report section. These new committee structures would be composed of three board members, so they would all be public. Minutes would be recorded, posted, and so quite literally, the very work that the board does would be accessible to the public at will, 'cause they'd be publicly posted. So the option A on this comparison table is what I'm discussing with you guys now, and ultimately Alex has broken this up into aspects, and then he's got the corresponding purpose to them. But the high level of this is, these committees would not be appointed by the board president anymore. These committees would be self-appointed. So if anyone on our board wanted to attend one of these meetings, they absolutely could, because it's a publicly posted meeting. At the first meeting of these subcommittees, a chair and co-chair would be self-elected, and the objective of the chair and co-chair would be to facilitate an agenda discussion that ultimately aligned with the board's goal work, which comes into our strategic design needs. So critically, and why this is linked to reports, is that the reports that those standing committees would then deliver to the board would be in, hopefully, to some degree, the universal format. The public would be able to see this. Our board would be able to use that information and say, "The action happening at these subcommittees supports our strategic goals, our design," and it ultimately leads to an actionable motion, a record, a sort of amendment, more or less, to the action we do. So less informational, more actionable steps coming out of these subcommittees. Important to note that quorum's not needed, because there would be no actual decisions being had at these subcommittee meetings. These are strictly for work. This is a pretty common structure. We're not reinventing the wheel. Traditionally, school boards either operate as what they call COWs, or committees of the whole, or they operate under a subcommittee structure. Our board's a little unique, because we do, we do a COW, but then we also have these subcommittees, so it's a little bit different. And so what ultimately we'd be doing is, is switching to a full subcommittee basis. Again, stretching the board president's role, the board president would not be appointing these positions. They'd be at will. Ad hoc committees would still be appointed. Statutorily required committees, such as parent-teacher advisory, behavioral interventions, representative slash committee positions would still be appointed by the board president. But learning, teaching, human resources, business services, and policy would be volunteer self-elected for chair and vice chair. We'd update policy 2150 to include the bolded text from press language addressing this style of structure. Our hope, again, and as put in this PowerPoint, that we leverage expertise and interest. We'd have some structure and accountability to that specific subcommittee. I'm hoping that having instead a board of seven, but having a smaller group with some experts at hand could lead to a little more nimble decision-making, and then recommendations at these primary meetings. And then it's our hope, of course, that all the items that would be presented for review would have a chance for careful consideration while in advance of the meetings. Other than that, I mean, there is, there is an option B, which I'm happy to discuss. It's a little bit more, it's a little less extreme and change. So same representative positions as option A would remain. So again, just to stress, these positions on this sheet, liaison, city zoning, ag advisory, they would still remain positions that we as a board would wanna be part of as liaisons, but we would not be calling them subcommittees. So again, in option B, same representative options, we have the same list of committees in terms of elimination, as in option A. So eliminating in the sense that we, we've discussed removing several non, non-meeting committees. So right now, we have a finance advisory committee meeting, and then also a finance committee meeting. We've got a sustainability committee meeting. We have an ag advisory council. So some of these haven't been, the athletic council, some of these have been inactive for years, so we'd be eliminating those, just in the sense that they don't exist, so there's no sense in having them listed. So, anyway, administration attendance, always welcomed, encouraged, and essential, essential, you know, 'cause we need expert opinion. Maintaining the following official board committees you have listed here, so finance, curriculum coordinating council, technology and policy. You'll note they're slightly different, because these are standing committees that already exist. So we'd be creating no new committees. We would just be reemphasizing existing committees, which is a half measure, I think, to the big picture goal of what we're trying to do here, and what Alex and our recommendation is for option A. The current membership and appointment process would remain the same as it is currently, which is board would appoint everybody to those positions, so, or board president. Quorum would not happen, so these would be still two-person board members, board member meetings, so it wouldn't, they would not be publicly posted minutes. They would not be accessible for participation to anyone, but they would be reported on at the board meeting, as you saw happen today. We'd still update press policy, or we'd update policy to standard press language, but excluding the bolded text that was provided, and then this again would, they have a minimal change to our existing procedures. That's option B. That's all I've got. Alex, did I miss anything? Does that sound about right?
I guess the final slide is just our recommendation repeated. So at this time, I suppose we would, we would like some feedback from the board, and then Michael and I will actually meet with the superintendent tomorrow to finalize recommendations. If they come to do exactly the same, we'll try to do it.
So with the finalization of the recommendation, then we'd come back to the board at the next meeting?
That's right. Well, the, with this feedback, apart from some unusual shifts, we would come to a vote at the next meeting as an action item. Unless there's something earth-shaking that we've overturned, so, you know.
I guess I have a couple of questions, but nothing crazy here. So I kinda, I kinda would split this into almost two sections here. We have a committee discussion, and we've got a reporting discussion. But from, so from a reporting perspective, Steve, from your perspective on this, is this doable? Is this a ton of work? Is it, you know, it's six one up, dozen the other? Like, what's your opinion on that?
I think some of it is, is pretty simple. The financial one is probably the one that we talked about the most, the financial reporting. So I've just got a, a couple of questions for the board. You know, one of the things that Alex mentioned was the Forecast 5 report. We're still going to use Forecast 5. We did have a great conversation with Nicole about it. Whether or not you guys like the reports, we don't have to include those in the board packet if we can. And one of the things we talked about was that some people like numbers, some people like graphs. So we're fine either way. It's just a matter of, what do you guys like in terms of visuals, or do you like the numbers? The other thing is just how much detail, this is the board's one. So one of the things we can do, and I've been in a previous position, is control funds, education, O and M, transportation, and kind of provide a running year-to-date tally of revenue received and expenditures. And then it's kind of a percentage of, if this is what we budgeted for, we're at 30%, or 40%, or 50%. That's pretty high level. That's what I would describe as 30,000 feet. Board bills, obviously, that's, that's something that we've done. There's a lot more detail in there on a monthly basis. Those two pieces, those two reports, I think, give the board a lot of information in terms of how money's spent every month, as well as kind of where we're at in terms of what we've budgeted for. Those are pretty, those are pretty straightforward. If we want more detail on that, then it's gonna get more complicated.
So this change isn't crazy, from your perspective?
If, if we do those two things, that, from a financial reporting perspective, I think that's, that's pretty doable.
There's that no perspective with regards to, like, oh, this is an extra 20 hours a week, or this is somewhat easy, or whatever.
I think that's, that's pretty doable. The HR stuff, there's some additions there, so that's a little bit of extra work. I don't know if that's a mountain to climb.
Oh, exactly. Crazy. I do think I just wanna iron that out a little more, base more guidance. Some of the examples that were shared don't necessarily achieve some of the goals, I think, but some are less transparent than maybe what we do, so just trying to bring it all together, maybe make a hybrid of the different segments.
And we can provide some samples to Alex and to Michael, kind of serving on that committee, give them a first look at it. If they like it, we can share it with the rest of the board and give feedback on those. The facilities, that's not really reporting as much as the five-year plan is, is, I don't see that as kind of a monthly board meeting, you know, report. That's just something that we develop and then track throughout that five-year process, right? And I would suggest that that's the route that we go with the five-year plan every year, you know, we update that. So we've always got kind of a rolling five-year plan. You know, once year one is done, you know, we're, we're adding another fifth year down the road, so we're always gonna have this, this rolling five-year plan. Kind of like financial, how much detail do you want? You know, like switch covers or roofs, you know what I mean? So ultimately, probably need a little bit of guidance on, on that.
I think just to add, to Steve's comment, I think a big piece of why reports and committee structure go well together is because reports drive the decisions the board makes as a whole. And so these subcommittees, as they, are essentially tasked with collecting information to make a recommendation. To me, the function of those subcommittees hinges on the information they receive to make those decisions, and so the conduit is the report. So while I think it's optimistic to think that we can be predictive in what those reports will compose of now, I think that it's not unrealistic to expect that as, and if these subcommittees form, the ask of information may likely change drastically by the format of those subcommittees, and as the needs of the district change. And so I think the running consensus is, though, that the standard reports the board receives should be attainable and unduly, or undulum, pardon, not very difficult to obtain, I know it burdens some, but that's, that's been my impression and take. So, I don't, just Steve, does that line up? You were in those meetings, too.
Yeah. And there are school boards that operate, you know, this would be a committee, this would be the whole. The board's role doesn't change. Still kind of operating that 30,000-foot view, and still sign, kind of setting direction and vision for the district. Those committees get involved in some of the, typically the districts that follow that model. The board members who are involved in those committee meetings, there's a little more detail. That's reported back to the board, and it can be in a handwritten format. And one of the things that's typically done, because a lot of that committee work is done outside of these kinds of meetings, these kinds of meetings get pretty short, right? Because that, that information is shared, or could be pretty short, because that information is shared via report. There's maybe kind of a summary that's provided in the meeting, but, yeah. There are districts, I've never worked in a district that operated that way, but, but there are some local, some close that do operate that way, so that's something to look to.
I guess, the, from the, so, I mean, that's, that person knows all the questions I had, the reporting side of things. As, to talk about committees. So, like, policy committee exists now, but like, the human resource committee does, right? Or does it to an extent, or this would be a newly created thing?
So, right now, the human resources, I mean, would most closely bridge to the curriculum coordinating, but not even though on some levels, because more like teaching and learning. I mean, I think the, the big purpose with human resources would be for functions related to staff, things that we traditionally see on consent agenda to begin with, but on occasion, things like negotiating our, our work agreements. You know, we have three different union contracts, things in terms of dealing with faculty concerns. I think, I think human resources ultimately can be a really good pressure valve to the community as well, so we can get a really good finger to the pulse in terms of, of where the community stands on particular issues. So we had discussed calling it communication, but ultimately, I think, human resources better align with what we had hoped its intended reporting would be, while its frequency matches, I think, what our current board needs, in that we had discussed it probably being a biannual. So this could, this could be a committee tasked with our town hall, like what we discussed at the town hall meetings, where there would be open dialogue, but it never, well, it hasn't recently taken flight. These, that committee would essentially be tasked with that type of reporting.
I know you talked about public minutes, but from a structure standpoint, all board members could attend, so we all could potentially...
Could attend, could watch, or could read the minutes of it, could see...
Are you an active person in the group, or are you just an observer of the meeting?
Well, bear in mind, there would be no voting happening.
Correct.
So it'd be purely a sort of think-tank style. There'd be an agenda. The chair and co-chair would ultimately be at, it'd be at their authority to just decide how they wanted to run that meeting. Like, a good, well-run meeting that'd be timely would operate solely on an agenda. They'd only talk about the items on the agenda. And then if you, if you weren't a chair or co-chair, attended one of these meetings and wanted to say something, the chair of that subcommittee, you'd be at their mercy to speak or not. And I would hope that in the effort to bring in ideas, that there'd be an opportunity for that. But kind of like our meetings, like, there's, you know, there's a time and a place, so...
But no concern from the standpoint of all the board members being together? I feel like, I feel like, in, on that topic, we are, since my time with the board, I can't speak for everybody else, but it has been like, hey, really, you can't be in one place at a time, otherwise the world blows up. Like, 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 no, like, that's not gonna happen. Like, if I run into Eric and you at High V, we may just be like, hey, how's it going? Everything's going great, and leave. We're not sitting there being like, hey, have you seen the agenda? Like, we're colluding on anything. Like, those, those things happen naturally in a small town, like, there's nobody who would...
Can you speak to the...
So, I mean, in terms of all of us being there at a meeting, I know I used the extreme example there, but it's been a lot of that in my time with the board. That's okay. For all of us to be in the same room and not have an official board meeting, we're not talking board business, and the meeting, but minutes we're pulling.
So the, it's a really good example. Three of you run into each other at High V, you're talking about the game last night, or whatever, as long as you're not discussing board business?
Correct.
It's totally fine. It's totally acceptable. It's totally legal. In this kind of committee structure, we would be publishing meeting dates. There is an agenda, so there's no, there's no Open Meetings Act violation, because there's, there's an agenda posted and...
Should still abide by the three, or seven...
There's a lot of, we're allowed to abide by that, yep. So I would wanna double-check with our attorney, was the process, is it still a roll call vote, is it still a called order? But because it's like a small board meeting, anybody who's there can participate. So if three board members are there, all three of them need to participate. If all seven board members show up, they can all participate. I don't wanna put words in Michael's, and I'll... I don't want to put words in Michael's, and Alex's mouth, so correct me if I'm wrong. But I think part of the idea, though, is that all seven board members don't have to attend every meeting, because your fellow colleagues are having this conversation and sharing the information, kind of like sharing the work.
So none of them really has to be there?
Of course, yeah. With the open door, potentially.
Absolutely.
And a big piece would be, we wouldn't be voting to make a change at that meeting.
We'd be bringing that back.
You'd be bringing that back to be, hey, at the recommendation of this committee nut, we had, we solicited an expert opinion, you know, Nick was there, and he believed that this was something that we should be aware of. We reviewed this, we decided we wanted to survey a group, so we decided, you did that, you surveyed a group, you collected that information, and then your chair reports back to the board and says, and on the basis of this information, which you've all received in advance, we're making the recommendation that the board approves X, Y, Z change, improvement, update. As long as nobody says Beetlejuice three times, though, that's all.
Yeah, that's a lot, so.
Got to straighten that out.
Okay.
So from these committees, we would receive maybe updates, or reports, maybe some documents that were reviewed by the committee? So information that was gathered by the committee that could be reviewed or be summarized for the rest of the board?
Alex actually did a really great job in giving us a report that I think mirrored this. This was a finance subcommittee report that Alex put together, and he presented this with us in advance of the meeting. By no means am I suggesting it be this detailed, because Alex put a lot of time into this. But this is, this is the kind of, I think, idea behind this. And so while you guys would, I hope, would take ownership in these subcommittees, ultimately, you'd have the sole discretion as that subcommittee to determine what you bring back to the board. And then the board as a whole would evaluate the quality of that, and if it was not sufficient, then a corrective action. Am I, Alex, am I missing something?
Well, I, that's true, but additionally, these subcommittees' agendas and, I guess, board packets, for lack of a better term, would be published on Board Docs. So you could go back and look at those and see, okay, we had a presentation on, I don't know, creating a five-year long-term budget. You could, you could go on Board Docs and look at that presentation, review it in your leisure. You wouldn't have to, if you don't want to, if finance is in your area of expertise. But all those documents that the committee looks at would be made available, not just for.
Right, that's probably the best part, is that every bit of information leading to a decision that this board needs would make. I mean, you'd really have, you'd have a lot of access to it, which is why the next piece to our ad hoc committee is discussing how we use Board Docs as a sort of aggregator for information. And so I like to think of it as like, the front yard of your house. And so if you have weeds, and it's hard to see where the house is, you can't figure out where it is on Google Maps, but if we have a really clean front yard, and it's very, you know, nicely painted, I think that's welcome, you know, so.
But others, those are excellent questions, James. Thanks.
So would this be for all committee meetings, we would write out, it would, we would be required to produce a written document then?
I don't believe the, in terms of, when you say the word required, I would just draw attention to when, whenever we have a public meeting, like, there are expectations that are required, that these meetings have an agenda posted in advance, that minutes be taken. And so suppose, at an absolute bare minimum, the minutes would serve as a report, while at the same time, the objective of the committee would be to go beyond the minutes and make a recommendation. And while Alex makes a recommendation using a beautiful PowerPoint, and he has a nice report, sometimes I've got times where I don't have, I'm just trapped, and I've got a little punch list, but I'm going to give you a really nice presentation verbal. And so if that's the medium that you as the committee choose, chair and co-chair, it would be, I think, acceptable, at least in terms of the committee. And then again, at the time, if our board goes, the needs aren't being met by the Human Resources Committee with just the minutes or with just the proposal, we would be in the power to create a more formal ask, while I don't expect that that would happen. Alex, do you want, is that?
Sure. And a lot of the things, I guess if you guys really want to get into it and research this, St. Charles has a similar structure, not exactly the same thing, every week, which is not our goal here. All the board members meet every week. Would be, in our opinion, a little excessive. We talked about something like that, but that wasn't, I'll leave a little later on. But a lot of what would happen in these subcommittees would just flow through the consent agenda. So we would recommend something at a committee level, would flow into consent. If anyone on the poll board has a concern or doesn't like it, they could ask the committee chair, or they could pull it from consent at the, at the poll meeting, like we do currently. Essentially, everything would be seen twice, as opposed to approved on first rule, if that helps.
We're also only talking about the four true new committees, not SEF, like, not bringing notes and all this.
No.
Yeah, I guess that's the question. I was getting that for Citizens Advice.
Yeah, they're still coming back with the same, like, here's what we talked about.
Yeah, for sure. So that's what we're, I guess, I've been a little more clear. The, all of those currently called committees would be now called liaison positions, and we just have these four committees. So we sort of, we created a new term to differentiate what will bring back actual actions to the board, and what will bring back information to the board. It's currently a sort of mixed.
And the liaison position, while it's currently, in a way, compulsive, would be voluntary. And I think in terms of making our board more representative at various community events, there are, I know a number of things that happen in our school district that I know a lot of us would, like, the board would like to have some representation of, and it's difficult to do. So I think broadening this liaison role, and this is a future discussion item, but broadening that liaison role leaves room for opportunity to sort of make a, I like to think of it as like a punch list or a calendar and a, you know, a signup sheet of sorts, where it's, hey, if there's an event going on here, maybe we put something out to the board, and who would like to, you know, attend that event as a liaison? As a rep, again, you're not making a recommendation to the group that's meeting, you're simply there as a figurehead, if you will, so. And like graduation is an example of that, or the awards night is an example of that, the FFA banquet's an example of that. Those are, those are things that, as board, we like to have a presence at. It's currently at will, I think formalizing those liaison positions leads an opportunity to be present in one of those with some regiment.
My only final ask would be, is there anything that you would like Mike or I to gather for the board at our next meeting? Anything different, or do you like what you see? I guess, a little direction would be helpful. Are we okay with this during the nation?
Me, myself? Yes, there's nothing here that I'm like, absolutely, this can't happen. I don't think that this can be asked, but like, somebody like Eric has the most, and Jim, obviously, the most experience, like, have they, have they provided any feedback? Or could we directly ask them for feedback? Just as people who have been on the board for a very long, for much, much longer, I like the person that's been along this team, geez. They've been on there a long time, they have a lot of experience, so that at least they could have their voices known, if they haven't already, so.
I think that is an excellent point. I definitely, I'm, I do think that their opinion matters quite a bit, especially since they'd be sitting on a board that would be operating under this, so.
Yeah.
While at the same time, at the same time, there are the constraints.
Sure.
That we're all familiar with. So my hope is, is that by not suggesting this for revoke tonight, having this up as an action item in July would be great. And my opinion would be, too, in July, that if there is some big feedback that we missed, there I see would be opportunity to table the action item, too.
Sure.
So, yeah. But I can't speak to kind of Eric or I.
You guys are making reference to IASB publications, that you guys, basically, that cover this procedure. I would just like to take a look at those.
Yeah.
In addition, I'd love to have a look at that time before we go down.
Alex, do you have access to that information? Would you be able to show?
I believe it was linked on.
Is there a specific publication that you were looking at?
Yeah. Do you provide some more specifics?
The two-one-five-oh?
If it's just the, if it's just the policy update, that's fine, I think.
Oh, you're, I see the whole text from press, is that what you, okay, like, with the press edition?
I see it, I mean, it's there. I just didn't know if there was some additional supplemental materials you guys put there.
There, I know there was, Alex, I have it here. You put together that, so if I can answer your question, I don't want to scramble for it either. The problem with not having things on a computer is you can't just control up. I have to sift through. Here, it's over here. This right here, I believe, did you guys get a copy of this, the committee? It's just a short eleven-page summary, you probably should whizz through this. But this was.
Includes the chart that you guys made.
This was the, yeah, this was two-one-five-oh. And then, which is actually, I'll ask you.
So are you asking about two-one-five-oh? Or the two-page PDF that was attached with that from IASB? They're just clearing up the confusion on board committees, your questions answered.
Was that, was that included in this? That was.
It was included, yes. And there was a link to it.
It's a lot of information, though. I don't see it after that, so. So I know, too, because Christian asked a good question, is it, is it in that packet? That, that press, you didn't have that down, the press counter? Because I see section two-one-five-oh, but I don't know.
It's in there with the whole.
Do you see, oh, okay, it is on the.
I just didn't know if there were some additional materials that were provided by IASB.
Oh.
Oh, no, this, or this was just taken from press plus. Whatever our current language, two-one-five-oh, is not the current language in press plus. It looks like it might add some local policy mixed in. So we would, we're recommending adopting the standard language of press.
You would, I have that, that was.
It would be a good idea, though, to probably have the side-by-side, right? So if we did do a motion in the July meeting, like, seeing this is the old language, this is the new language, because this would be a policy revision, so. Right, Alex?
Tagged, Alex.
Yeah, so, yeah. So Christian, to address your question, I think, yeah, we would probably benefit from having a side-by-side, like, a little red.
But IASB hasn't put anything else on it, not this press plus.
Oh, no. Not to mine, yeah, yeah, I'm on the right. Yeah, I didn't see, I was digging, but, okay. That's a really good question. Steve, you guys, anything, you guys are good? All right?
Maybe just anything else important? Anything else that you'd like us to bring back?
In our goal to be efficient, we kept to a tight twenty-five minutes, so. All right, so then, I'll move, then we go to the, we move to the next item, the superintendent's report.
I've got four items for the board to match. The first one is policy revisions. I've been going into detail on these. This was a significant revision, because it was policies that were due to be upgraded or updated, but there was also policies that needed to be reviewed that were out of date for a variety of reasons. So we discussed that at the last board meeting. If approved this evening, this brings us current, except we got press policy update one-fifteen recently, so the policy committees can have to review that. But the nice thing is that if these are approved tonight, we're caught up, and now we're just looking at new policy revisions moving forward. So happy to answer any questions, but this is, this has been kind of the brass ring we've been chasing for a couple of months.
Is there a motion to approve the policy revisions as proposed?
Some.
I do.
Moving second, allocated?
Aye.
Aye.
Policy revisions, second revisions.
All right.
I personally don't think you guys covered this.
Yes.
Kelly deserves all the credit.
Thank you, Kelly.
Now the policy guru for the district, well, as the historical policy guru for the district, she's looked through more files. It's a ton of work, it's an absolute ton of work, so she deserves all the credit. Nice job. The next item that I have is really based on the conversation that the board had within the last couple of months, potentially moving to ad-large elections. So currently, under school code, school districts cannot have more than three board members from any single township within the school district. That limits, you know, how many board members you can have from, let me stand so I can see this a little better. Limits how many board members you can have from a township. And in a school district like Sycamore, where there are multiple townships, but the population is really condensed into, you know, the Sycamore-Corlin Township, you know, there, there's a question of, you know, would it be better for more than three board members to come from one township? That is not a decision that the board can make. It's a decision that voters could make. What the board can do is put that on the ballot to get feedback from the voters, you know, in terms of whether or not the voters will like board members who would be elected at large meeting. You could have board members, as many board members as you publicly like from any single township. Noting it's unlikely that you could seven from Sycamore Township, or seven from Portland Township, but in theory, if the board approves the resolution tonight, and it's not about the voters have approved it, that technically could happen, if it's unlikely, but could happen. So kind of highlighted all that in my comments. If the, so the resolution, I, you know, the request before, I talked to our attorneys, they prepared a resolution. If it's approved tonight, this question could go, could go on the ballot in November, and if approved in November, then it could go into effect before the elections coming up in the spring.
Could or will, Steve? Do what, like, how do you why the?
Good, the way the resolution is written.
Yeah.
And the question, I believe it is written, it would go into effect in the spring. Doesn't have to, if, if the board wanted to change that, good, but could go into effect for the board elections in the spring.
This has always been, it's, it's obviously, it's not our decision, it's just a decision if we want to put it on the ballot. But to me, to me, it's a, it's a no-brainer to let the people decide, because it's, it's been a concern, because in theory, you could have, you could have ten people running for a school board position, and one of them could walk on themselves because of how the township thing plays out. And it gets super complicated trying to explain that to anybody in the public who asks as well. Also, I do not like having you figure out where all of you live to ensure that I'm talking about the right townships. So, yeah, it's, it's very, very difficult. But yes, I get a ton to it, could be somebody all from one, better near one elementary school, or something like that, and what that could lead to, but like, I think that's personally very far-fetched, but, yeah, it's, it would be a concern if we had multiple people that really, really wanted to be on the school board, and one guy's just like, yeah, I'm in the right township, so I'll just walk on this thing, you know, even though you know I can find two spots left or whatever, so.
Historically, I was talking to someone in the nineties, and that did happen.
Yeah.
It is a huge concern, so my ask would be, would it be possible to provide, before this goes to a referendum, if the board chooses to adopt the resolution, to show sort of a map of where everyone lives? Because I bet you, like, ninety-five percent of the population's been basically in Portland Township, if not.
Hey, you talking about providing that, where, where the seven current board members live, or?
No. I mean, that's, I didn't have that in mind, but, you know, a map of where the population.
All that's available on, on the, I know that the township maps are available on the county website. Population density, I have to double-check, I can, I'd be glad to talk to, contact Tushison's office and ask for that, but I can tell you for sure that the density of population in our school district is in Sycamore-Corlin Township. I don't know if that's ninety percent or ninety-five, but it's pretty comparable.
Well, while I, I don't, I think it needs to go to the people at this point, by finally putting it up to them, but given the notice of election, page three of the resolution, including what we likely go on the ballot, and that's the language I have a problem with, I think issue with, because it's not, it doesn't give a broad enough information of it, it's just. It's just, it's kind of legalese a little bit to a certain extent, and I don't think that the voters generally are, are subject to that. And they just, I think there'd be some additional information, because I was about to explain what the difference between at-large is and what we're doing now.
This is line straight from our turn. I, I didn't, wait until today. But it's, you're right, legalese is the best way to put it. So I'm not, I would not be inclined to wordsmith that, I understand your saying. But I also know that our attorneys are going to tell us this is the language that is kind of required. So if there's additional language that the board would like, and you want to send me kind of what you're looking for, I'd be glad to run by our attorneys and see if that can be incorporated. That would allow us to have a similar discussion with the revised resolution in June, July. But the deadline to read this on, you know, as you guys know, it doesn't have to be on the November ballot, but the deadline to get it on the November ballot is August sixteenth, eighteen. So it, it would need to be approved in July to get on the November ballot. If the board's okay putting it on the spring ballot, we've got much more time to, to, to work through that word. But, Chris, and I totally understand, oftentimes, the, the language we get on things like this is kind of beyond our control, yeah.
Oh, I consider it to be.
Um, was it originally set like this so that there'd be wider representation across the district because of the way our district is?
It's, it's written in school code, um, and although a lot of the population in Illinois is, you know, concentrated in, in the Chicago area, you know, a lot of districts around the state, and inner, if you see some odd school districts, or, a lot of them are in more, much more rural areas. And I think, my understanding is that the thinking was, unless you Sycamore as an example, if all seven, you know, board members were elected from Sycamore Township or from Corlin Township, the lesser populated townships kind of on the fringes of the district, it just, um, it doesn't give them a fair shot of representation.
Right, right.
So I think that's the rationale, and that's been in the school, this has been in school code for decades.
It may be there for, for that reason, but, again, people should be able to vote on that guess, but, like he said, if I were to see that on a ballot and uninformed, I don't think, as a voter, I would make a decision based on the proper knowledge of what that really means. So, in other words, like, more rural students wouldn't have the same representation. If, uh, everyone ran, that was just right in the center of the township where the, you know, the main population is, so, yes, kind of.
Are we able to actually put something, like, on our website to explain it more, or is that, like, if it got to that point, like, if it was going on the ballot, like, hey, two months out, like, just putting something out there where if we're getting questions, we could direct people there or for more information, or?
We could put something on informational.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, stage really clear.
Not picking a side.
Can't, can't encourage, can't dis, can't discourage disinformation. So if you go to an at-large, this is, you know, this is what that means. Get further questions, contact us, or the county clerk's office. So we can do that, we can provide information, we just can't encourage voters to say this.
Just a comment too on this, I think, I would just stress that, having been a write-in vote myself, uh, because there was an empty seat, and to avoid, uh, an appointment, because our board in the last two decades has appointed a number of board members, all of which have been excellent, but nonetheless, to avoid having, I think, a, a, more or less a board composed of appointees in the future, there are people who, who want to be on the board but can't be, and there are, and in a lot of ways, like, just thinking about this as more or less lifting a restriction on willful parties to serve the public, rather than taking away the ability for somebody else to serve. Because ultimately, if you were from a different township, and it was, we'll just say, had fewer people in another township, you have as much of a right to run in that election as somebody from a bigger township. And quite frankly, when, when election, you know, when you're going and you're soliciting, you're campaigning, I don't, I don't know that there's gigantic division between the Sycamore folk and the Mayfield Township, and they're like these rivaling townships, and, you know, people toe, or vote on party lines, like, I don't, I don't know that people go into that much, so. While in larger communities, there's probably more clear division between candidate As in this part of the area, candidate Bs in this part of the area. You can throw a rock, you know, across Mayfield Township, and, and in a lot of ways, in Sycamore, they're all within a, a really, really close radius, within a twenty-minute drive, so, um, from my perspective, it just, I'm hopeful that this opens things up a little bit. And my, the information I've gotten too is that we're the last, this is from the elections office, that we're actually the only school district in the county who still has this rule, which is really appealing, so. I've motioned to approve the resolution for at-large Board of Education elections as presented.
Second.
Move in second? Is, uh, was they all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, motion passed. Next item on the agenda, Steve, you have a second.
Uh-huh, keep going. So, want to return to a topic that presented on a couple of months ago. And this really kind of fits with the conversation about long-term facility planning. So, in this situation, we primarily talked about it for reference to the high school, but ultimately, it's something that would benefit, benefit the district in terms of supporting all of our, our facilities. So, earlier this year, as part of short-term, long-term planning, I recommended that the board consider supporting, putting the one percent sales tax or the county school facility sales tax on the ballot, much like giving the, the public an opportunity to vote on, um, at-large, electing board members at-large. That's their decision, this would ultimately be their decision as well. The board's decision is whether or not to place it on the ballot, and our board can't do that alone, it's got to be done by the boards of edu, I'm going to say this really carefully, the, the board, to make sure I get this right. The boards of education who represent at least fifty percent of the students enrolled in schools, public schools in, in the county. So, just because our board would decide to do that doesn't mean it necessarily gets put on the ballot. It would take other school districts in, in the county, doing the same thing. Alex and Beth and I have attended, or had the opportunity to attend a couple of different meetings where PMA, who was with us tonight, I'm going to turn things over to Jennifer in just a second, uh, where they presented information about county school facility sales tax, potential impacts on, on the school districts in DeKalb County. Answered a ton of questions, which Jennifer's much more knowledgeable about this than I am. Showed us an opportunity to do some of that with that as well. My recommendation is based on the fact that projected revenue would allow us to continue to complete preventative maintenance, be a little bit proactive, um, in addressing facility needs, without putting that on property tax, owner's tax bills, or property owners' tax bills. So, the one percent is paid for on top of, you know, it's a, it's a differential one percent on, on the sales tax. Again, the most significant facility need that we have right now is the high school. The district's carrying quite a bit of debt right now, long-term debt that we're, that we're paying off, we've budgeted for that, but we've got a couple more years before all that debt is paid off. So, uh, we do have a little room to continue taking on debt and borrowing money to complete additional facility projects. Uh, and we may have to do that if the one percent isn't pursued and the voters don't approve it. But this is an opportunity to not put that on property taxpayers' bills, it's an opportunity to share that across anybody who shops in in DeKalb County. There are some exemptions that I'm sure Jennifer talked about here in just a minute. But it's shared by anybody who shops in in DeKalb County, not just property taxes. So, um, without further ado, I'm going to turn things over to Jennifer Courier from PMA to, to go into more detail.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. For those of you who I haven't had the pleasure of meeting yet, I'm Jennifer Courier, I'm the Vice President and Senior Analyst at PMA Securities, and we serve as the district's municipal advisor on the issuance of debt. So tonight, we're going to talk about these sales tax. So just to give you an overview, the county school facility occupation tax law authorizes, as Mr. Wilder stated, uh, districts representing a majority of the students within the county, other than Cook County, to impose a countywide sales tax pursuant to a successful referendum, to be used towards school facility purposes. And we'll define those in a little bit. This law has been around for some time, it's been almost twenty years since it went into effect in two thousand and seven, and over time, it's been amended and improved on. But at the core, the sales tax can be imposed in quarter percent increments up to one percent. So that translates into a dollar for every one hundred dollars of expenses. This is a map of counties with county sales tax or CSFT referenda. The blue counties have successfully passed a sales tax referenda. The gray counties have tried, but so far failed. And the white counties, which includes DeKalb County, and many of the surrounding counties around Cook, have not yet had this question on the ballot. So, what purchases are affected by the sales tax? It includes everything that the municipal and county sales taxes are applied to, except for this rather lengthy list of items, which includes cars, trucks, boats, mobile homes, farm equipment, services. So what it does apply to is basically any items that you find at a department store, right? And hopefully you have a copy of this in front of you, because I know it's difficult since it's the other projector, but these are our estimates of the revenues by district for all the school districts in DeKalb County. And the way we arrive at these numbers is we really start with getting an estimate from the Illinois Department of Revenue for the revenue that would have been collected if a one percent sales tax were imposed in DeKalb County for calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. So, based on that estimate from the Illinois Department of Revenue, look, and all of these columns have letters at the top. So if you look at the last column, column F, bottom number is the total estimated sales tax revenue that would have been collected during calendar year two thousand and twenty-three, and that number is ten and a half million. So then, look at all these districts, and in column B, we list their total housed enrollment according to the Fall Housing Report. Next to that, using EAD or, or equalized success value as a proxy, we estimate the percentage of students in that school district that would fall in DeKalb County. So first, District four twenty-seven, which is box on the chart, uh, almost a hundred percent, but it's ninety-eight point six percent, to be precise, of your students are within DeKalb County. And then, we take that percentage under total housed enrollment as, as district-wide, to get the numbers in column D, which represents the estimated DeKalb County students for each of the districts. The, then in column E, we have a percent of the total DeKalb County student enrollment that each particular district represents. So District four twenty-seven contains about twenty-three point eight percent of the total number of students in DeKalb County. So we said that it takes the majority, or the school boards that represent a majority of the students in DeKalb County to get this question on the ballot. So, really, looking at those percentages in column E, you can see how pretty much half of District four twenty-eight onboard, because they do carry nearly half of the total students in DeKalb County. So their involvement is all but required to, to make this question get on the ballot. But then we take that twenty-three point eight percent that applies to District four twenty-seven, multiply that by the ten and a half million estimate we received from the Illinois Department of Revenue, and you come up with about two and a half million dollars that would read our estimate of the sales taxes on an annual basis that District four twenty-seven might receive if a one percent sales tax is imposed in DeKalb County. Any questions so far? So, for districts that are in multiple counties like four twenty-seven, you would receive revenue for only those students that you have in DeKalb County, which is most of your enrollment. A student, by the way, does not have to attend a school that's located in the county, but, um, they just have to reside within the county. And again, as was mentioned earlier, only students attending public schools qualify. So, let's define this school facility purposes. What can these sales tax dollars be used for? Well, the column on the left that's shaded in a darker blue there lists really the big-ticket items that you could use the sales tax money to fund. This includes new school buildings, or additions and renovations to your existing buildings, technology, infrastructure, security features, architectural plans, virtually anything you might have in your comprehensive capital plans, including land acquisition, roof improvements, et cetera. What it does not include is listed in the group on the right. That includes buses, textbooks, computers, operating expenses, including instruction and salaries, with one caveat. School resource officers and mental health professionals could be included, but that must be specifically written into the ballot question. That's important, um, it, to the district, it needs to be reflected in the, the resolutions that the other districts within the county have as well. So if you collectively decide to include the language regarding resource officers and mental health professionals, you want to make sure that everybody's got that on the ballot question. So, this table shows the current sales tax rates for municipalities in DeKalb County. So, Sycamore and DeKalb both are currently at eight percent. So you can see how a one percent sales tax, in addition to this, would affect, uh, the sales tax rates throughout DeKalb County. Also, it is important to take a look at the current sales tax rates in Kane County. Right now, they are generally a little bit higher than you'd find in DeKalb. Many of them are already at eight percent or above, some as high as nine percent for some neighboring communities. So how would this work? Boards of education that represent a majority of the student enrollment in the county would each have to vote to put a resolution, pass a resolution, to place the sales tax question on the ballot. The Regional Office of Education then certifies that question to the county clerk, and the county clerk eventually puts it on the ballot for the next regularly scheduled election. We've got some timelines we'll take a look at for the upcoming elections momentarily. So ballot language, which is from statute, can't be edited or amended. Is, it, it has been improved over time, so it's fairly straightforward, but unfortunately, there is no editing that can be done to it. So it would read, as you see here in blue, um, it would say, shall retailers' occupation tax and a service occupation tax, commonly referred to as a sales tax, be imposed in DeKalb County at a rate of, let's say, one percent, to be used exclusively for school facility purposes? And this bracketed statement is the piece that would include school resource officers and mental health professionals as well. And that bracketed statement is the one that you can determine whether you want to include or exclude, right? After a successful referendum, the sales tax is then imposed at the rate that was included in the ballot question. So again, it'd be quarter percent increments up to one percent. The sales tax dollars will start flowing into the district about four months after the tax is collected. Note that I didn't say four months after the election, so that's a key thing that we'll take a look at when we do the timelines. It's not necessarily that soon after an election, it depends if you're going for the question in the fall or the spring. So we'll take a look at that in a moment. And then it really sticks around unless the subsequent referendum actually reduces or discontinues the sales tax. So how does the disbursement process work? The Department of Revenue collects all the sales tax, and the State Treasurer keeps it in a separate fund until it's time to disperse it. So every month, the Regional Office of Education receives those sales tax dollars from the state. They then have thirty days to disperse it to all of the school districts in the county, and they do that on an enrollment basis. And again, that enrollment only includes students that reside in DeKalb County, not total enrollment for any of the districts that have, that are in multiple counties. And that enrollment is based on the Fall Housing Report. So every year, that exact percentage can be stacked based on the Fall Housing Report, so all of the districts in the county. Once you receive those dollars, they would be held in a separate sales tax fund known as the School Facility Occupation Tax Fund. Also, it probably not as meaningful for District four twenty-seven, but, um, in some multi-county districts, it's, it's a but in some multi-county districts, this is a keynote. And that is the improved facilities where the money is spent don't necessarily have to be in the county where the sales tax is imposed. So if you happen to have a facility or something that you're doing that's technically located in Kane, that would be okay. It's just DeKalb, it's very specific to how the dollars are dispersed and it has to be students within the county that have it. Okay, so there are a couple of different ways that the district might be able to use the sales tax revenues to pay for capital expenditures. One of those is you could pay debt service on new debt that's issued for the school facility purposes that were listed on the previous slide. Alternatively, you could use it, pay as you go for capital projects on an annual basis, as long as, again, it'd be one of those qualified school facility purposes. You could also retire or perhaps abate on an annual basis part of the bond levy for existing debt, provided that debt was also originally for those purposes that are included under the definition. And the exact use, any of these three things can be done. None of those have to be determined at the time of the ballot question. It's not a referendum. It's just determined individually by each district that receives the funds. So if the district were to issue bonds that were payable solely from the sales tax revenue, there wouldn't be any referendum requirement if you were to construct a new building, although the way that construction costs are increasing, this probably not going to be enough to create, to build a new building if you were to issue bonds against that two and a half million dollar cash flow. You could issue alternate revenue bonds or debt certificates to be able to do more capital expenditures now and then repay the debt service over time using that sales tax revenue as the source of repayment for that debt financing. A common instrument that districts use for that would be an alternate revenue bond. It do require a couple additional legal steps, which would be, which would include a thirty-day petition period as well as a bond issue notification act or finite hearing. So the district has to have those before, just, you know, a short, brief hearing, much like a budget hearing. The obligations issued against the sales tax revenue, whether it's alternate revenue bonds or a debt certificate, neither of those affects the district's ability to issue other non-referendum limited tax bonds. Those are subject to a constraint called the debt service extension base, or D sub. And that's basically an annual limit on your payments for non-referendum limited tax bonds. That's not impacted at all by debt that's issued against the sales tax. Also, important to note that because the sales tax revenue would be new for the district, you know, something we'd have to incorporate into the timeline if the district were to issue bonds or certificates against that revenue stream is we would have to get an outside third party to provide a feasibility study that actually projects out over the duration of the bond amortization what that revenue might grow to and what that might look like over that period. So this is the state chart we looked at a few slides ago, but we've added some details to it. So columns G through K have been added to represent, in column G, our estimate of what the proceeds might be if your district were to issue alternate revenue bonds against the sales tax and only pledging the sales tax. Why that's important is alternate revenue bonds require a pledged revenue source. You have to demonstrate coverage on debt service by showing that your revenue stream, whatever it is, on an annual basis, exceeds the debt service payments by at least twenty-five percent. So these numbers assume that the district only pledges sales tax. And in that case, if you issued the alternate revenue bonds over a twenty-year period, you could get proceeds for capital projects now of about twenty-four point four million. Alternatively, if the district were interested in an abatement strategy in lieu of using the money for capital projects, that abatement value of the two and a half million where you estimate you receive annually translates into about thirty-six cents on your bond less, on your tax rate. And that equals about ninety-eight dollars per one hundred thousand dollars of home value. Any questions on, so the numbers so far?
Not on the numbers. I just wish it could be a little bit better explained on the ballot because it just says sales tax and it doesn't say, I don't need these specific items. So I think that's probably why this didn't go through the floor. Because you know, if you're seeing you're going to be taxed on everything you buy, most people are going to say no. I mean, that's what I feel.
I don't disagree, but yeah, it's unfortunate that we can't change that language. So there are some risks I want to make sure the district understands when you do issue debt paid from the sales tax. And one of those is that your share of the sales tax revenue could potentially decline if your enrollment growth is slower than other districts in the county. And also, if the sales tax, because the sales tax is a very economically sensitive revenue source, it is naturally and inherently subject to some dramatic fluctuations. So again, this goes back to when you issue alternate revenue bonds, you're already demonstrating that that revenue source is going to provide at least twenty-five percent of a cushion coverage over your maximum debt service payment. So that helps alleviate some of that. But it is something to consider when structuring bonds against the sales tax.
Just to clarify a question on that. So when we lock in to, like, if hypothetically the board decided to leverage that revenue and then there wasn't fluctuation, positive fluctuations, that additional revenue, does that still flow to us or is that obligated as part of the original debt?
Sorry, so if the, if the two million wasn't, fluctuated and in some year wasn't enough to cover the debt service payment? Is that a question?
That's a good one. As you said, I was thinking more optimistically, like, if it was, say, four million in one year, are we obligated then to hand over that full four million?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, no, the debt service payment would be just fixed at the time of issuance. So anything above that, as the revenue source figures for us, would grow over time. You can use that toward pay-as-you-go in those years or just accumulate it over time, abate with the balance. You know, that you do still have all those other options on the table for the excess revenue.
But your grim question where things get cheaper and there's less revenue, I guess what happens in that scenario?
Well, yeah, that is something I want to make sure that the district will understand. If that were to happen in any given year, it would require the district to dip into operating funds to pay the bond later. So we would want to make sure that the district feels comfortable with the coverage that is being demonstrated.
And issuing debt against this revenue is a separate decision?
Correct.
Right.
Yes, yeah. You're not, if this were to get on the ballot and pass, there's no obligation for you to issue bonds. It's just an option for how is it leveraged that way?
I'm just going to jump in for a second. That feasibility study is really important. If this gets put on the ballot and it gets passed and we decide to issue some debt, that feasibility studies is really important because that, that projects what the revenue is going to look like over time. I tend to err on the side of being conservative. So if they think, you know, sales tax revenue is going to grow by a percent, I would recommend that we look at, you know, assuming that it's going to be half a percent or maybe even flat, just so that we don't get in that situation. I know districts that were a little more aggressive in their estimates and did have, did them operating funds. I would, I would want to be conservative to make sure, again, these are several steps down the road. But that's what that feasibility study and feasibility is really important for.
And that twenty-four point four million dollar number, by the way, did assume no growth in that two and a half million dollars, whereas the feasibility study is likely to show some kind of growth over time. So there's already, in that twenty-four point four million dollar number, it's already a little bit conservative that's not incorporating any growth, which you could do when structuring those bonds. All right, one of the questions that comes up every now and then when we talk to communities about the sales tax is how does it impact a tax capped district? And the short answer is that it doesn't. The sales tax doesn't impact nor is it affected by the property tax extension limitation law or the tax path. And like I said earlier, the debt service extension base, which is your annual payment limit for limited tax generalization bonds, that's also not affected by the sales tax or any debt that would be issued against it. I mentioned previously that we'll take a look at these timelines. So these are some key dates for the fall two thousand and twenty-four election as well as the spring two thousand and twenty-five election. If the district wanted to move ahead with approving a resolution to try to get this question on the ballot, the deadline to do so for the November election would be August nineteenth. Then, if it were to pass, the sales tax actually wouldn't go into effect until July first of two thousand and twenty-five. You'll notice, if you look at the green column for the spring election, that effective date is the same. So no matter whether you go to a fall election or a spring election, it's always the following July first when that sales tax starts to be imposed. So let's say you wanted to try for this in November and it passes, the district wouldn't actually start receiving those revenues until several months after that July first effective date. So it's actually going to be almost a full year after the November election before you start seeing those revenues distributed from the hardware.
Hypothetically, could the district put it on the ballot in the fall, fail, have it fail, and then put it right back on in the spring?
Yes, there's no restriction. You could keep trying it back. So yeah, there's no restriction.
For this against, just, yeah, that was going to be my question.
Yeah, not a one-shot.
I'll tack on that. Does anything else need to be done or is it just?
You would have to go through a new resolution.
New resolution.
Yes, to get it through.
And then we're pretty much dependent on four twenty-eight, correct?
Yes, you would need them to be able to show a majority of districts.
If they didn't want, if they wanted to and we didn't, they wouldn't need us at all.
Well, they would, because they actually only have forty-five percent. So they would need stuff, you know, it would take some other districts.
What, what is that communication like? Does, I guess, is coordination encouraged or is it typical?
Yes, it's typical and encouraged. I think a lot of times, you know, administrations start to talk about it and, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if those talks, or I know in fact that those talks have been developing over time. You know, a lot of time, it's very rare that one district alone has the majority. It happens, but it's not too common. So it's at least a couple of districts that have it going on together. And in fact, if you don't mind, I'll flip to my last slide, which is just some key takeaways because it's something I was about to reference. When looking back at some of the successful referendums throughout the state, it seems to go best when you have more support among most school districts in the county, not just those that make up fifty-one percent or fifty-five percent. Because at the end of the day, it's not just your district's voters, it's the entire county, right? All of the voters within the county have to support it. So the more schools that are supporting it and, you know, providing information about it and awareness to the community, tends to go better at election times. And then each school district would want to educate its voters on how that sales tax is going to be used because that really helps. When, you know, when they hear they're going to be taxed, of course, the question is, or what, what elevator? Why, why is it going up? So the better you can educate your community and four twenty-eight can educate its community on what their plans are and how their communities, their residents' tax bills will be affected, the more likely it is to be successful. And I think the big point is also that we've seen a lot of successful school districts communicate the benefit in terms of property taxes not paid. That doesn't have to be through abatement. It could be that you say, well, you know, we might have to go to a referendum for X if this doesn't pass. If it does, then, you know, our, our capital needs, our financing needs rather, are much smaller as a result. So that can kind of, you know, entice the community and just inform them of how this benefits them. Yes, they'll be taxed more in their community, but here's how it benefits them as well on the flip side. So that's anecdotal, but it seems to help when that is a message.
Well, this, this is a group, I think, that educates the community pretty well. Some irony, I don't know. But yeah, how does that want to educate the community on something like this? Could read a tagline, like, what is the?
Well, in some counties, they've, you know, a group of districts have come together and hired a community engagement firm, for instance. That's not something that PMA does. We can support you with information and give you numbers for things, but there are firms out there who, you know, not have done that for sales tax referenda specifically. You know, maybe they're trying to just run more local referendums as well.
And like the L R election piece, we can provide information, you just can't encourage voters to go yes or no? This is just the impact, you know, information.
And that, I think, to me is a big question, is just that, like, what that line is. So that, that same rule applies in the case of this too. It can't be a specific, you know, it's before, it's about information.
The press is here. Let him know you won't be taxed on everything. I, I feel like it's better than people that maybe don't even have kids in school anymore have to have their property taxes raised. Plus it goes on the ballot, so it goes before the people at the other option, you know, with the elections. And so that's a good thing about it, is people can choose it or not. It's not something being forced on them. I would think the public would like that better.
Last point I'll break up is, and I know this was a question about a year ago when we kind of discussed this at board meeting in April two thousand and twenty-three. We recently received a memo from PGA V planners. They do a lot of feasibility studies for the sales tax throughout the state. And they recently took a look at the DeKalb County area and provided an estimate of how much of the sales tax revenue in DeKalb County actually comes from non-residents, right? So, so this is another, you know, potential positive of the sales tax is that you might be able to fund some of your projects from revenue outside of just people in DeKalb County. And thanks to NIU, thanks to Northwestern Medicine, the Hishwaki Hospital, and a lot of retail destinations throughout the county, PGA V estimates that at least forty-two percent of retail spending within DeKalb County is done by visitors, not county residents. So that's, that seems to be a pretty significant number, a huge percentage.
One of the things we talked about too, after that, that information was shared at the last presentation, forty-two percent of those people don't reside in, or just whatever, don't reside in DeKalb County. But of that other fifty-eight percent, not all of those individuals are property tax, property owner item. So there's a portion of that fifty-eight percent that doesn't currently pay property taxes. So I think it just speaks to how this is shared by people and not just put on the backs of property.
And we asked the question at the last meeting that grants are not affected by this. I forget the terminology she used, but she told us. I can't remember the representative's name. But I asked the question, so if we were to get a grant, would this be affected? And she said it wouldn't.
Steve, do you have a pulse on where other districts stand on this? So I do, and I don't want to name names or put anybody on the spot. There has been a conversation and it started slowly, hey, you know, what do you guys think about this? At, you know, superintendent meetings from time to time. It's gathered some steam. There are some of the smaller districts that are, I think, in favor because of the benefit, you know, for them. Finance is generally tighter in smaller rural districts. I don't want to speak for DeKalb, but they're obviously have a huge impact on, on this issue. I know that they've been part of the conversations and meetings, but I also know that, you know, they haven't made a decision about where they're at in that, so that's up to them. So I would say multiple smaller districts are supportive of it, but they don't, that percentage of enrollment is huge because they don't, you know, affect it, Jen pointed. Not only DeKalb, but also Sycamore, I think, are going to have to play a huge role whether it just gets on the ballot. And then if it does, then, you know, you can part in communication and that sort of thing. So how does that work? I mean, does, does some district just step forward and say, hey, look?
I mean, does, does some district just step forward and say, hey, look, we, we, we put this on the ballot, word spreads and?
Yeah, so, right now, all of the districts, almost all the districts in the county, there's, there's one that's gonna take an interneutal stance, not gonna get, not get an interest. But, um, everybody's having these conversations right now, you know, in their school district. And, and at some point, you know, especially before, you know, by July, by the end of July, you know, gonna make a decision about whether or not to, to approve a resolution on the ballot. There's gonna need to be a continued conversation. You know, the, the smaller, lower enrollment districts aren't gonna be interested in even having that conversation, whether they support it or not, if they know for a fact that DeKalb especially, but also Sycamore, don't support it, right? So, um, I am not asking the board to vote on a resolution tonight. We have some conversation, we're gonna have Jen come and present to the board. But if the board wants to approve a resolution, that, that needs to be done by the, July thirtieth. Board meeting, special board meeting, could be called, doesn't need to be in this case, um, to get it on the November ballot, just kind of like we talked about, yeah, kind of large, large. So what I would ask is for you to consider the information that Jen provided tonight, the information that we've provided, you know, um, I have Alex and Beth as well. Kind of mull things over and, um, and revisit it in July.
Would that be sufficient time was?
If, if the board chooses to approve it, uh, on July thirtieth, and approve their resolution that night, you know, it's, it's signed and, and kind of to our offices, just down the streets, we get to them pretty quickly. Then it's a matter of the other districts being the same.
They're the same, would you like to read the fiddle?
Well, that's when our, our board meeting happens to be in July, so that's the deadline for us. Everybody's board meeting is kind of all on, on different dates. August, uh, again, I think it's the eighteenth is the deadline to get it to the kind of clerk's office to get another ballot for November. So that's the deadline for everybody. July third just happens to be the deadline for us, because that's the last meeting before that deadline comes.
We don't know if DeKalb's actually gonna be able to vote on this yet, or?
Yeah. I know that they're having conversations about it, but they've not given, they've not come down on a yes or no whether or not to support it yet.
Hey, guys, it's my personal opinion that we should sort of have that discussion if we support this or not before July, or if you report to DeKalb, is that gonna be helpful? At least, that's what I, the, the impression I got from Steve, you know, DeKalb is more present. So, I, I guess if that's the thing that the stars, I, I don't know if I'm gonna ask you again, I'm not sure if you hear the same.
I, I think everybody's gonna be interested on, on where everybody's at, and superintendents meet periodically and, and kind of, again, the districts have been pre-clarity, the board's gonna pre-clear some habits. So when there's clarity, you know, the superintendents share that information. So I assume that I'm gonna have some of that information, well, before July thirtieth.
Will we be able to include maybe a, um, discussion on our July topic?
Um, yeah, we could.
Just to have a conversation, see where everybody's at.
Yeah.
Five minutes now, though, I'm sorry, Steve. But I was, I thought we'd at least have the public vote on it.
I'm not opposed to it. I mean, I, I think I have, I have a pretty much a doubt. I'd see what other board members think as well. What's your opinion?
Between now and July ten, I can, I can reach out to the other superintendents and see where their school districts are at and, um, get questions, you know. I can provide information, one-on-one, email conversation, phone call, you know, whatever, please let me know.
Sorry, for the discussions? So if the resolution passes, I assume we have much more detailed discussions on what we're gonna do with this money.
Well, I, I think to go back to the information that Jen provided, I, I think, and, and going back to the initial conversation that, that I think we had in, in January, February, I think it was January. The revenue for Sycamore, I think, would be especially helpful to allow us to continue to do, to complete facility projects. Again, with, you know, pretty limited, um, ability to take on additional debt. Kind of waiting until, you know, pay things off to get there now. The high school, um, this is the oldest high school in the county. Still serves a great purpose, a lot of, a lot of good things here, um, but the original parts of it back to, you know, the nineteen sixty. So, um, at some point, I think it also could allow the board and the district, a future board and a future administration, because it'll, it'll be that far off in the future to pay off that debt. It allows us to continue to do facility projects, um, until that is paid off, and then have a, really, I think, significant conversation about the high school facility. But it does not have to be STEM, kind of way. Again, to go back, it could be age ago, you can take out smaller bonds for smaller projects. But I think the tax abatement use is really important. Two and a half million dollars estimated a year would allow the district to complete some projects, uh, but also impact some of their property tax owners, um, bill. So, and again, a lot of people outside of the district or who don't own property within the, the community, potentially giving them a little bit of relief, um, while still generating some revenue. I think to get the district to a point where they can have a, a really, again, significant conversation about this facility in specific. But again, if, if that revenue starts to come in, it doesn't just have to be used to revise, it can be used at any building. There's a unforeseen roof leak at one of the elementary schools, it can be used to fix that because it's a facility project. Any other questions for me or for Jen? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got one more, um, item to discuss with the, the board tonight, um, and strategic planning. So back in the fall, we started the process of strategic planning, um, with the goal of, not to, um, plan words here, but the goal of creating district goals as well as action steps for us to focus on. So, um, pleased to share tonight, um, the final draft of those district goals, district and building level action steps, that are a result of, um, community survey, so feedback from the entire Sycamore community, not just parents, um, not just students. We got students feedback, we got staff feedback, um, but we also got feedback from anybody within the community. The, the survey was available to everybody in the community. We took all that information, our consultants distilled that down, shared it with the board in a special meeting. And then kind of talked with the board, you know, based on this information, as well as, you know, the direction of what we'd like to go. You guys gave feedback, here's Delka, who's our consultant, he gathered all that together and then worked with, um, central office administration to kind of start to fill that a little bit and find that. But then we worked with the entire leadership team to, to look at that information and revise that down to, um, what I'm about to present tonight. So this is a, a long process, um, but it involved literally, um, we received everybody, or at least gave everybody in the community an opportunity to provide feedback. So the goals fall into five different domains. The first one is learning and teaching. This is the most important thing that we do in our school district, uh, the learning and teaching, we sit in classrooms, hallways, and in our buildings. So the district goal is to promote success in both academic and social emotional settings by exploring and implementing evidence-based, inclusive learner-centered practices. Evidence based on feedback in the survey, feedback from the board, the conversation also with the, the leadership here in the district. That's a pretty broad statement. So what does that really mean? What, what does that, um, what does that mean in terms of practice? So two different levels, district action steps and building level action steps. And you'll see these in, in all of the five domains that I talked about here tonight. Now, I'm not gonna read through all of these, I'll, I'll highlight some of these. But in terms of district level action steps, committing to inclusivity and building belonging for students and staff to increase equity and accessibility across the district. Implementing the learner-centered education model, um, that's been a lot of the work that we've done for the last couple of years. By completing the profile of graduates, so this year, I don't wanna come and see Lauren here tonight, but we released a, a portrait of a Spartan video that explained what our portrait of Spartan looks like. The next step is develop a profile of graduates. When a graduate, Sycamore student walks out of the halls of the high school, what does their profile look like? Implementing a universal screener to support SEL, updating the district's curriculum review cycle, communicating career and student interest pathways, at least one additional pathway to go to here at the high school. So, um, still fairly broad. How does that work it done, um, in our building as well? We've got building level action steps, too. So in grades EC, EC through five, or the childhood through fifth grade in our elementary buildings, there's a hyperlink there. There's another almost full page of action steps at the elementary level, of things that they will work on to support the district level action steps and the district goal. But then also grade six twelve, so the middle school and high school, uh, what kind of work are they gonna be doing? Implementing the professional learning community, vertical articulation, uh, with a focus on NTSAs and evidence-based practice. So, um, we've had some changes at the high school and in the middle school. And some of those things are in place already, um, but we have a new principal at the high school here, Mr. Swanson finished his first year. And Mr. Exstrom is moving to the middle school next year. So some changes in, in leadership and changes in, um, vision a little bit, making sure that we don't lose that vertical articulation between the middle school and the high school. Uh, domain two was operations. And the goal here is to secure sustainable funding to support academic support and success, ensuring equitable access to resources and facilities for all students. So then you see the district level action steps. The first bullet point has to do with the, the budget, how we plan for that, what we prioritize, how we use our resources. Continually updating learning environments, and I think that speaks to Alex's point about the five-year facility plan. That's part of this, the, the, that work is gonna be a part of achieving this goal. And then implementing alternative financing, financing strategies. So aside from our tax levy and the money that we get from the state, the money that we get from the federal government, are there other financial strategies that we can implement to, to expand resources for the, for the district? Building level action steps, again, broken down by EC five and, and six twelve. Reviewing the purchasing process, evaluating supply lists, ensuring equitable distribution of funds and supplies. Uh, it's amazing how those things have changed in, in my twenty five years of, of education. Things like implementation of technology could really change the supplies that students use in the classroom, which is an ask of parents, you know, going out to buy school supplies every fall. So making sure that, we're evaluating that, but then also ensuring equitable, equitable distribution of things. Um, six to twelve, reviewing bu- building budgets, focusing on transparency, we talked about that tonight, why we spend it with learnings and equitable distribution of funds and supplies. Domain three was the human resources, um, providing a positive, safe, and supportive working atmosphere where people want to work and come back the next day. So remember what our, our mission and our, and our vision is for the district. And our vision has to do with where students and staff, um, want to come back every day. So you, you see how we've incorporated mission and vision into these goals. District level steps aligning hiring processes, completing the profile of the staff member. We're actually, I think that line was just, uh, recent. Ensuring the district's compensation benefits are readily available for staff recruitment. So when we're looking for staff, making sure that they know where they can go to look and find what compensation looks like for them. Marketing our school district for recruitment, um, exploring innovative practices for recruitment and retention of staff. The teacher shortage is, is not getting any better. What can we do to set Sycamore aside, uh, to continue to set Sycamore aside as a destination to support for staff, but then what can we keep them here? Um, then identifying ways to grow our own leaders within the school district. There are building level action steps as well, developing professional development plan for staff and professional, paraprofessional educators. And then getting out to local university job fair, it's NIU, but expanding that as well. Uh, in grade sixty to twelve, participating and aligning hiring process for the district, and specifically for staff in grade sixty to twelve. So what can the high school, the middle school staff and leadership do, um, to really look for staff that is gonna fit in their buildings? Uh, domain four was instructional technology. And I don't know that we've talked about it enough, but Dr. Valentine and, and her team have also created a, a technology strategic plan, that aligns with this, but it's a little bit different, goes into a little bit more detail, that's something we're gonna present to the board, um, in the fall. But we were able to use a lot of that discussion and information to put these things together. So, um, supporting the use of technology for learning and teaching and to facilitate student success. And then you can see the district level action steps there in terms of, of a safe environment where technology is, is, uh, is used, um, innovatively to promote learning, successful equity. Online self-paced training for professional development. How can we take advantage of the technologies we have to support our staff who, who works with our students every day? And to create that learner-centered environment. So graduate, graduates are prepared, uh, to be both consumers and creators. I had a conversation with somebody recently about the students creating and, and selling, um, apps already. You don't have to be a college graduate, you don't have to be a college student. It's amazing what our students can do, so not just consumers, but creators as well. Uh, creating a family technology training program, um, supporting our, our families at home. Our students use this stuff every day, but sometimes parents and family members aren't as knowledgeable about it. Uh, and then technology adoption framework. Updating technology specialist curriculum, um, so there are technology classes at the elementary level, at the middle school and high school level. Updating those curricula so that they are current, uh, in regulars first students, um, into a STEM curriculum. And then at the six twelve level, supporting district level action steps as well. Last but not least, communications. Lauren Holtz has also developed a strategic plan for communications, so this aligns with, uh, that plan. And like these district goals will be used moving forward, that plan is, is reviewed and updated every year. So the district goal is fostering a, a strong interconnected school community through strategic communication. We always have room to improve, but, um, uh, doing our best to provide that. Then there's district level and building level action steps there, too. Elevating the district's brand, engaging the commu- uh, community. Strengthening relationships and expanding partnerships. Uh, we've got a lot of great partnerships within our community, within our county, but there's always ways to expand that. How can we use the communications that, that we utilize to do that? Providing ongoing communication support and training to staff, families and students. So getting a clear message out, uh, what's the best way to do that? Parents wear is new, it's, it can be used really well, we don't always use it as well as we could. So how can we train staff to do that? How, how can we recognize opportunities to get better at that? And parents wear is gonna be replaced in, at some point in the future, because there's gonna be something better that comes out as well. How can we train and support our staff to do that? Um, providing translation services that are accessible to all staff and, and families at the EC five level. Uh, we have some translation services available, uh, but it's on a pretty limited basis, is there other ways that, that we can improve there? And then six twelve, creating a communication plan for staff, students, and community members, prevents an important information. Developing a hub on the district website for staff use. And this is actually something, um, something that we've developed, um, not just in grade six to twelve, but for all the schools across the district. So, uh, developing these subjects that we, so, um, I did read through that a little bit more than I intended to, uh, but this is a lot of work that has come to fruition here at the end of the school year. Any questions or feedback from the, our team?
Will we report our progress on meeting the goals and action steps, both to the community as a whole and the board? Is there a plan for that, or is that something to work on?
So what I would, what I would plan to do is do that twice a year. Mid-year, give the board an update, as well as at the end of the year, give the board an update. And something that we can share with the community as well, something that, that doesn't sort of go in the benefits. But as part of board meetings, part of discussion board meetings, it can also be shared with the community. What we share with the community may also be in addition to what's shared with the board, just so that it's in a form that's easily digestible around the community. I would argue that doing that twice a year, you know, a mid-year update and then an end-of-year update is, is probably as broad as frequent as you wanna go. Monthly, I don't know that we're gonna see the, the kind of tangible progress. And that can be kind of deflating when you're not seeing it month to month. But when you step back a little bit and you look every six months, you know, so half, every half of the year, you're looking back at the progress, I think it's a little easier to see that. That discussion in the spring then allows us to update, you know, cross off goals that we've achieved. That profile of, of a graduate is a really good example. That's the kind of action step where you either achieved it or you haven't, you know, when that's presented to the board. That's the kind of action step where you either achieved it or you haven't, you know, when that's presented to the board, that action step gets marked off. But in the spring, then we're, we're having conversations about how to update this for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So I would, I would say twice a year is probably the schedule we would be on. Jim?
I would just add to Alex's point, I think that there's a real, one, I love this infographic, because it's like, this is really a
Oh, yeah.
nice piece. I assume there were some hands here that Lauren maybe worked on this, because this looks kind of like a similar type of irony to somebody else's, but even so, that's, that's sharp and concise. The other piece too is those buckets or goals, more or less, I see there's just an overlap between what our proposed subcommittees could look like and ultimately the work that they do could bridge to these district goals. So seeing some, a sort of synergy across the board is nice. I too would be interested in just being able to know what the instrument would be for that as well. So I don't know if that's something that we flush out of those mid-year reviews or mid-year updates. Is there, is that instrument like a, a verbal, or is it more or less like, what does that look like?
I think it's a little bit of all, you know, to do the discussion, you can't put everything into, you know, something that's written by, by the report that is meaningful for the board to see, but then also either shared with the community worth the foundation for what goes to the community. And you're right, Lauren and her team put this thing together based on, you know, the work that they did. And I think this is a really good example of something that's easily digestible, that may not give the board all the detail that you guys are looking for. But something like this, it's pretty concise and hits the highlights of the progress that we've made. You know, I think in, in the long run, it's gonna be a little bit of all, it's gonna be some verbal as well as something to share, and then share digital. I think this is great, this is a really wonderful job.
Something that just popped in my head, would it be possible to put something like this on the website? And then families or individuals could click on learning and teaching, see more information about that, see that, you know, so there's a condensed version, but then if they want all the information the board gets, they, they have it. So for anyone out there that's interested in getting grants or things, I don't know how feasible that is, or if this is something we would have as a pamphlet, or this would be somehow made into an electronic.
That's a really good point. I'd like to, to think that, that our communications team can do something like that, you know, maybe not put this exact document, share it on the board or on the, the website, so somebody wants to download it, they can, even post it there. But use this as kind of the foundation or the, the basis for a webpage where, like you said, each of these is a link that drills down to the action steps. Yeah, but I think that's pretty feasible. Can we talk to Lauren and her team about that?
It's a great idea.
Websites are good, but we also have social media presence now, which I think is also useful, gives word out to the people who follow, Facebook, Instagram, I don't know, I think it's maybe TikTok, I guess I did it on, I'm not on TikTok, so. But there's, I don't know if they've come up with plans or ways to implement this in some of the social media engagement, like how they promote these things and promote the achievements of students. So I don't know if that's a part of this.
I, I think it will be, and that's a little bit beyond me, their expertise is, it's gonna be really useful. They, they put this together and then they were like, oh, can we put this out like, you know, when they made it a couple days ago? And I said, no, it's, we have a conversation with the board, who would make sure that you guys, who really started this process, had an opportunity to give us feedback. But based on the feedback that I've heard, now we can kind of let them run and not only use our website, but like you said, use social media too. I'm on TikTok, so if, if it's on TikTok, I'll have a chance to see it. And in addition to tonight, if you go home and you're talking, thinking about this, or talking with a friend or your spouse or your mother, you have feedback, please let me know. I wouldn't wanna tweak it a whole lot, but if it was something that, you know, that you can't tweak, please let me know, because, you know, based on the feedback that I've gotten tonight, we're gonna start running with this. And, and I don't, it's not the sort of thing that I would wanna really revise significantly during the year. We'll kind of keep notes, if there's something that we catch in the year that we wanna fix, we'll hold on to that until next spring and then roll that into the next iteration of these district goals.
I feel this is an accurate product of representative work that we did in this previous meeting with Gary here. So I, I think it's great that it was consolidated into this forum, there was community involved in terms of inputs, so I think this is great. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay. On to open discussion and future agenda items? Thank you, sir.
I just think the second question said about discussing the sales tax that are especially relevant.
I would fully support that, if you could squeeze it in, I know. Are you, yeah, are you asking to have it as an agenda? I would.
Yeah, I know you're looking for people who are here, a chance to do something.
Are you looking to have it as a discussion item or an action item? Discussion item? I'd like to keep it maybe, if we wanna keep it as an action item, the thirtieth, since that would be our deadline, just to kind of keep it on task.
And in terms of discussions, are there information that should be brought to that meeting to be prepared? Or is it just gonna be a, a sort of question, how to turn it over to the board members?
Well, unfortunately, the other board members weren't able to see the presentation, but we do have a pamphlet and I guess just bring up some of the important points, you know, like for, for example, how would it affect the bonds or, or, you know, which should be brought out? And I guess they have access to that.
So it should be, it should be sufficient just having it powered up again.
They have that and, and then, and also the fact it doesn't affect grants if we were to get it right.
And by then, we may have some more information about what other districts are thinking, maybe they could do a little bit more on it, since between now and then, it'd be nice to know, maybe, please.
Yeah, any updates I've, I've gotten from other districts I can share at that July tenth meeting?
I guess my thinking is, would it be wise to sort of come to a consensus on where we stand before we have to vote on thirty? Because the thirtieth really sort of puts in the binding, where we have to take action that night, otherwise, especially if we're really, because we definitely have to face them, and we get it on file.
Well, okay, well, and just to, I think, kind of bring this back to home here, I've got this as an agenda item for the July tenth meeting. Is there any other discussion items or open agenda items that you guys think are worth discussing now, unrelated to that earlier item? I would just take this opportunity to then, I think, use this past meeting as an example to my point that, it's come to my attention that I'll be more than likely leading the next July meeting. And possibly the July thirtieth meeting in the absence of Jim. So unless that changes, and as soon as I know, you'll know. I'd like to see though, and I just wanna put this on your radar, that for those meetings, we, the way I would run them would be, we'd have an item, we'd have a motion, which would be, we want the board to review it. We'd have a second, which would be, we have two people who want the board to review it for action. And then we would have deliberation. And then that motion essentially, which would be specified, so it would be, do we move that X, Y, Z, B voted on? Seconded, then discussion, then a vote. And I think that will expedite hopefully some of these items, just so that way we don't waffle, because I know it's difficult. So that, I just wanna put that on your radar, that that's kind of a Robert's Rules thing that I'm hoping to bring in at the July tenth meeting, and then again at the July thirtieth meeting. The other issue more or less would be just in terms of the agenda. So an agenda setting, you know, calling to a vote, moving items on the agenda. I intend to hopefully, for those meetings, spend a little bit more time on those specific agenda items that we order and structure. And so if we do need to table an item, like tonight's running late, and so, and a lot of these are informational, it'd have been a good opportunity to probably table the county school facility sales tax discussion. While we did have a presenter here, it's difficult, but it seems like we're gonna probably have to have that discussion again because of the absence of members, at least consensus of the board. So some of those like vehicles of, of Robert's Rules, hoping we can test them out, but I'm new to it, so I just would ask for your patience. But that's all I have for future discussion, issues, observations, questions. Are there any future agenda items beyond what we just discussed? All right, then I, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, so moved.
We need a roll call? No, I think we need, yeah, we do a voice call, okay. Uh, so, I think a voice call, how would you call this?
You can ask.
Yeah, okay, okay, again, thank you for your patience. All right, so Alex, please vote, or we just say yes, right?
Yes. You can just ask, all of them favor.
All of them favor?
Bye.
All of those. It's getting late, I'm like, nine oh one, this is bad time.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.